So we've gone from New Jersey five.
Okay, we're gonna see you right there.
Yeah, but I'm back on the second, so I'll be good.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Um, oh wait, you have no public comment? And we are now gonna call a meeting to order. Director Hockert?
Here.
Director Kelsinger?
Here.
Director Law?
Here.
Director Petrie?
Here.
Director Probeni?
Here.
Chair Sherman.
Here.
Hey, let's stand for the legions.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I give a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Director Kelsenberg makes a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great, Director Petrie with the second. All those in favor of approving the agenda for the secretary's meeting, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda passes. You got Sam with first round?
So students are definitely looking forward to winter break. I think a break is needed for all students right now. Uh, we have started our hallway decoration contest, so right now we're in our winter theme. Uh, and it's looking pretty awesome. We have, uh, red and green lights up, that snowflakes, snowmen, candy canes put up around. So it does look pretty festive around, so that's definitely, uh, something fun that students are working on right now. Um, student council has started blast week planning, um, so we're gonna keep some old events and look to add a couple new events as well. Heritage Fashion Show was a huge success last year, and we're definitely looking to do that again. Uh, and we'd like to try to broadcast it this year and have the community be able to experience that as well. We had a united council meeting last Thursday to discuss blast week and school start times. Uh, united council is bringing about thirty lead student leaders together, and most are from different clubs, student unions, um, all around our school, and it gives every group a chance to voice their opinions and concerns on different internal affairs. So, uh, with that meeting, I got a lot of feedback on school start times. Uh, I presented the same research that we got in the last study session meeting, uh, to the united council. Um, and then we also shared the feedback form, uh, through our Instagram, and a lot of students filled that out as well. Uh, the feedback I've received is generally negative, uh, they're not fond of the change. Um, I think the biggest concern I've seen is with extracurriculars and after-school activities. Um, some feedback has been positive, and I think most of the feedback that is positive is a result of the research. Um, after students see the research and see the support, especially for the extracurricular aspect, uh, they're definitely more in support of, uh, changing start times. Uh, it looks like the feedback right now, as far as the form goes, uh, is people are either neutral, satisfied, or very satisfied with current start times, and then, uh, more students believe that starting school later would improve academic performance. So, little bit of a balance there. Um, and then going forward, I plan to continue, uh, getting more feedback through, uh, spreading the form on our Instagram and through our united council.
Thank you very much. Um, we appreciate your work in getting and attaining that feedback and just sharing information, because tonight we'll have a lot more information to hopefully share with the student bodies, so thank you. Are there any questions for Sam Silverman?
One quick question, when is last week?
Last week, it's the week of Valentine's Day, so I'm pretty sure it's twelfth through fifteenth.
Okay.
That is all.
Great, thank you. And now for our superintendent report.
So tonight, I would like to have, we could have done this earlier, but we can do it now, I guess. Uh, board member Petrie, come on up here. And I am going to present to you an award from the Minnesota School Boards Association.
Oh, hot.
Yes, yes.
Oh my god.
This includes a category of recognition for those people who have completed one hundred or more hours of attendance at MSBA-sponsored meetings and activities within a four-year period of time. I'm pleased to inform you that Beverly Petrie has attended the director's, has attained the director's award for two thousand twenty-three through twenty-four. The certificate has been mailed directly to you with the hope that you will present it, oh, to me, with the hope that you will present it. With your congratulations, perhaps at your next board meeting. We at MSBA appreciate the efforts and dedication of school board members put forth for the sake of public school education, and we encourage you to urge their continued participation. Thank you. Uh, you will be honored at a leadership conference recognition luncheon on Thursday, January eleventh, and I know a number of board members are signed up to attend that, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see this. It's not even cardboard.
Yeah, thank you.
And so the other, only other thing I want to say as part of my report tonight is, you know, thanks Sam for the remarks. I actually had a chance with, uh, Pete and Katie, um, and some other folks, and Andrew, um, to attend a, uh, class where they had a, uh, Socratic discussion on the, the pluses and minuses of the early start. And it was very consistent with your remarks for what the kids had to say. The kids who, who looked straightly, straight at the research were, yep, this makes sense, but a lot of kids had, you know, well, this impacts my life in these different ways. So we were really appreciative of, uh, getting the offer to come and listen to the students and hear the students' candid feedback. Thank you.
All right, um, I do not have any opinion at this time, um, but we are gonna move on to tonight's consent agenda, which is on the screen. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Can I get a second? Great, Director Probeni with the second. All those in favor of approving all the items on tonight's consent agenda, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent passes. All right, so, um, now we're moving, we're gonna certify the two thousand twenty-three payable, twenty thousand twenty-four property tax levy, so strategic direction C, utilize systems and align resources in an efficient way to support our, welcome.
Good evening. So, before you this evening is, um, the proposed two thousand twenty-four, um, property tax levy, and on December fifth, um, we had our chief of taxation hearing where you heard about the final proposed levy in addition to, uh, information about budget. And so before you this evening is the final levy for certification. Um, you will see up, up on the screen, um, the general fund and the community service fund and the debt service fund amounts for a total of sixty-two million four ninety-eight, one eighty-five, seventy-three, and that is before you tonight for final approval.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve this. Can I get a second, and we can ask you any questions? Okay, thank you, Director, if you wonder with the second. Any questions for me? I know we've, this has come before the board a couple times, so, um, great. Seeing no questions for me, we'll go ahead and hold on us. All those in favor, um, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Great, opposed? Thank you, Mary. Are you sticking around for this one? I think some of my agenda here has changed. Resolution amending and restating prior resolution, is that correct?
Okay.
So it can be, um, great, I'll turn it over to you to explain.
So I am going, I have Jody Zesba from Ailers with us this evening. She is going to, um, not only, um, I have a amended resolution before you, um, and the main purpose of that is because there is a bond refunding opportunity, and that is the change, uh, basically, um, in the resolution. And, um, Jody's going to walk you through the pre-sale report and just highlight some information on, um, the bond refunding. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jody.
Thank you, Marie. So when I was here in November, I told you that we might be back with an amended resolution, assuming rates moderated, and rates have been continuing to decline in the municipal bond market, so we are at the point now where we think it definitely makes sense to move forward with your refunding opportunity. You have, uh, your two thousand fifteen A bonds have a holiday of February first of two thousand twenty-four, so we'll be right at that point when we sell the bonds and including them with this issue just allows you to save on costs of issuance also, since you're already going through the reading process and issuing bonds, so it makes a lot of sense. The savings that you will achieve as part of the refunding, um, will need to go back to the taxpayers in the form of renewed debt service levies. It's not money that you can keep for your district's budget, so I just wanna make that clear. When you save money on refinancing home mortgage, you get to do other things in your household budget potentially with that, but that is not the case, uh, with taxpayer dollars. So when you issue these bonds, we'll be, uh, we'll, we'll have tax relief for your property taxpayers over the remaining years of the bond issue. So with that, I'll just point out some of the updates that we've made. You'll notice that the dollar amount of the bond issue is higher because of the refunding component. Um, going to the first page then, you'll see that we, uh, mentioned the amending resolution. Um, one more page, and Jody, are you, move down? Perfect, so that, uh, that paragraph, okay, oops, one more up now, I guess. There we go, okay, so under the proposed issue, you'll notice that last paragraph referencing the refunding. We, um, aren't sure that we'll always get a premium, we're expecting to get a premium, so when we had the bond attorney draft the language for the resolution, we assumed we wouldn't get a premium, just in case that doesn't come to fruition, so we didn't wanna cut you short on the amount that you'll need for that. So you'll notice that we are expecting to issue one, one hundred sixty-one million eight hundred thirty thousand, but the resolution does state a different amount, just in case you don't get the, the premium. And then the purpose does now have three components. So you're issuing bonds for the school building bond portion, uh, portion of the voter-approved authority from your November election, some facilities maintenance bonds as part of your long-term plan, and then finally the refunding component. The next page then, as you can see on the right-hand side there, summarizes the refunding estimate. So your existing bonds have interest rates of three to five percent. With municipal bonds, every year, every principal payment has its own interest rate associated with it, so we do talk about an overall interest rate, but know that each maturity has a separate interest rate. Right now, those rates range from three to five percent. We think that the true interest cost rate on this bond issue, the refunding portion will be about three point one four percent, and that you're likely to get that premium. So all of that, um, together then nets to a savings of about two point two million dollars, which is fantastic news. And, um, all of the information on the rest of that page is really the same as what we talked about at your November meeting. Um, the other thing that we updated is on page three, the, uh, review of existing debt, said that we were monitoring your two thousand fifteen A bonds for refunding, and now it just says that we are moving forward with that. On page four, we mentioned the, uh, within the investment of bond proceeds, proceeds, we do mention how much we expect to earn on the escrow account. Once you close on the bonds, then we will issue the call notice, and we have to give at least thirty days' notice to your current bondholders. So between the date that we close on the bonds and when we call the bonds, we expect to earn about three hundred thousand dollars of interest, and that is calculated into the savings also. The next page then shows the proposed schedule. You'll see the action that was taken on November twenty-eighth. We've inserted, um, the action tonight on the amended authorizing resolution. And then, um, as we go through the schedules, there are a few things to point out on those. So page seven of the document, the sources and uses schedule, now has a new column for the refunding component. So again, details of the three components, the voter-approved school building bonds, facilities maintenance bonds, and the refunding of your two thousand fifteen A bonds. We have some combined schedules. Uh, we have the school building bond schedule, where we've moved some of the principal payments up a little bit, because you're going to be saving some money on the refunding bond, so that just allows you to pay off the school building bonds more quickly and save money there. Uh, the debt service schedule for the facilities, facilities maintenance portion is exactly as we presented it at the end of November, so no changes there. And then we have a few schedules related to the refunding. So page eleven is your existing debt service schedule for the two thousand fifteen A bonds. That is where you can see the differing interest rates associated with each of the principal maturities. Again, the range is three to five percent. Page twelve is what we are expecting to see. Uh, this is pretty close to current market conditions, maybe a little bit of a cushion built in, but this is pretty close to what we'd achieve if we were to issue the bonds in current markets, and hopefully rates will continue to come down. And then our favorite page is page thirteen, which shows the savings of about two hundred thousand dollars each year. So then, for a total savings of about two point two million dollars. The, uh, page fourteen is the escrow account. In the middle there, you can see the interest that we expect to earn at about three hundred thousand dollars. And then we've updated our detailed plan, that's in the tiny, tiny, tiny little font, but there is a column there now that shows the refunding savings, and because you levy a hundred and five percent of your debt risk requirements, the savings actually translates to about two point three million when we add in that five percent cushion. We've adjusted a couple of the facilities maintenance funds, future issues down, because we'll be able to fit in some more pay-go money rather than, um, rather than bonds, because you'll be saving on the, uh, refunding component. And we have a little bit less interest associated with the building bonds then too. And finally, the chart that gives you the nice level tax rate over the, uh, life of the, of the debt that you have, and your, um, tech levy, your capital project levy, so capital and debt levies are included on that chart. So that's how it all comes together.
So I just wanna clarify, okay, the two point three, two point two million, what, what that Jody was talking about, that is money that translates to go back to the taxpayers over time, okay? This is not a windfall for the school district that suddenly we have another two million dollars that, uh, we are able to spend. So, uh, it's great news for the district, and it's really good news for our taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Can I ask a quick question on this lovely chart here? Has anything changed on this chart because of this refund?
Yep, so, you know, a little less interest throughout the whole life of that.
So it's kind of spread out the whole way, got it, okay, thank you.
Great, um, this is a resolution, so, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Can I get a second? Director Kelsenberg? And, um, Jody, well, pop. Director Hockert?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Law?
Yes.
Director Petrie?
Yes.
Director Probeni?
Yes.
Director P. Lander?
Yes.
Chair Sherman?
Yes.
Resolution passes, great. Thank you very much.
See you in the new year, and hopefully we have even better results than we're expecting.
Great, thank you so much for all your work.
Of course.
Yes, is that the point?
That's the resolution for the polling places.
Yeah. So next item on the agenda is the combining polling places. Um, and so that's just a resolution to, we do this every year, just to establish that combined polling places do.
So this is a little different this year, because this is, Washington County is running this next election for their general election. So we have school board members who will be on that ballot or on a ballot within the general election. But Washington County is the one who says, these are the polling places. Um, when we, as a school district, where, like this year, we ran our own special election, we kind of went with what Washington County recommended. In the future, if we have a special election, we can decide as a district where we want the polling places. That wasn't real clear last year. Um, so this is what Washington County has recommended. It's a general election, so my recommendation to you is to approve this as, as recommended by Washington County.
Can we discuss this, and I'm sure it'll come up in the calendar, do we have that, the election day off in schools?
Just, we, it, we, we're working with the county to try to get it moved from Brookview.
Okay.
We were not successful. So that is something we're gonna have to address, yes.
But I see Brookview's still on there.
Yep, so that is something we're, we have not addressed it yet, but it is something we're gonna have to take a look at.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Okay.
I had a question. Um, so just out of curiosity, I, there are certain, um, like, for instance, if, if we had a bond election, there are various times of the year that we could have a bond election. So, and I know that we're not gonna do that, but in an election like this, a national election year, if there were to be a different school board election, like, let's say in May, then would we have two sets of polling places?
I, I'd have to get back to you on that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's not important, I was just kind of curious about that, because, you know, we're not planning to do anything outside of the boundaries of that.
You know, this is a fairly, probably last four or five years, this is a requirement that has come in that didn't used to be. So school districts could, okay, we're gonna, this is what we're gonna do, and we're just, they wouldn't have to do this annually. They could just decide ahead of time that here's where we wanna have our elections. So now that we're required to do it annually, I don't know the answer to that, that's a great question.
Okay. All right, um, so this is also a resolution, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the polling places. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great, Director Hockert with the second, and Jody, well, pop. Director Hockert?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Law?
Yes.
Director Petrie?
Yes.
Director Probeni?
Yes.
Petrie, Ben?
Yes.
Chair Sherman?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Now with that, we're gonna move into, uh, strategic direction A, which is ensure the line process is adaptable to meet individual student needs. We're gonna start with our first report, which is gonna be, um, the proposed calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, and twenty-six. And just to remind, um, everyone who might be tuning in for the first time, these conversations about altering calendars and ultimately what we'll be talking about next, which is start times, um, was mentioned back, I believe, in April, last spring. Um, just how we can better align our, um, organization to support improved academic outcomes and improved mental health outcomes in our students and staff. So, um, tonight, we're here to hear more meat on the bone to the idea, and, um, so for that, we're gonna turn it over to staff. I'll start with Superintendent Fump.
So we've got Mark here tonight, uh, to really, um, go over proposal for really the next two years. And so I think the first thing I'll say before Mark even gets into it is, you know, initially, we talked about, okay, we can maybe look at a calendar for an early start, maybe for twenty-four, twenty-five. And in my, in, in what, what we're gonna end up doing here tonight is we're recommending that in the near future, probably within the next month, you approve two calendars. And the reason I'm recommending that you approve two calendars is we wanna give our families time that they can prepare their summers. And so if we were gonna be making a, a shift to a calendar, like we're, initially, we had proposed here for twenty-four, twenty-five, starting another week earlier in August. Families have already got trips, they've got camps, that their kids are already signed up for. And, um, you know, part of this discussion delay has been our energies until November, we're really focused on getting the referendum done. Now the referendum is done, we're shifting back to calendar discussion. Uh, so it was really based upon my recommendation, to be fair to families, to give them time. Okay, if we're gonna have to adjust, um, okay, now we know we've got some more time to adjust. So, um, that's been the thought process on the calendar. Um, and again, my recommendation, moving forward perpetually as, as your superintendent, is gonna be to approve, basically, you'll always have the calendar approved a year and a half, two years out, so we're not placing our families in this sort of situation. Um, so that's, that's why the, the rationale on, uh, the shift, uh, took place. And, you know, I've had a number of people ask me about it, but, uh, again, I, I think in this discussion, and I think in the follow-on discussion we're gonna have, um, about, uh, the, the start times, uh, I think we have to be sensitive to the needs of the community. Uh, at the same time, you know, I'm gonna always try and make recommendations that are, are best for our students, that are sensitive to the, to the community's recommendations, but, um, so anyhow, that's kind of the rationale behind it, and, and, uh, I think that people will appreciate in the future, okay, we're always gonna know a year and a half out what, what the, what the next calendar is gonna be like. The other thing I wanna really touch base on tonight, and, you know, Allison and I have talked about this a little bit in, in, in my remarks, uh, last, um, April. I, I said, you know, as a superintendent who'd been here for the first year, I said, okay, you start school prior to Labor Day, but what's the real positive impact on our students and our staff by starting school, you know, maybe a week or so early prior to Labor Day? And so what I would ask the board tonight is, is we're going through this discussion, and whatever, we will take whatever direction the board ultimately wants to go with this. But I think the question for us is, are we gonna be a pre-Labor Day board or a post-Labor Day board and district? And which direction that goes, we can figure out the way to do it. Um, and as you know, most of state is post, is pre, post-Labor Day. Um, so there's some, there's some reasons why we are proposing a pre-Labor Day, but that's what I would recommend, uh, moving forward here. So those are just my opening comments, and then I think I'll turn over to Mark, and he can kind of get into the details here.
Good evening. Um, one other thing I wanted to add to what Dr. Fump was talking about is we also are a little bit later this year than normal, is because we are making some changes to some of the things with the calendar, and we intentionally went out to each one of our buildings, met with the staff, got feedback, left many conversations with the C R N, but we wanna get the, the input and, and thoughts and feedback, good, bad, and different, on some of these proposed things that we have. So, looking at these calendars, so not only next school year, but the following school after that, or the school year after that, um, there's some philosophical things that we're switching. The first one is, um, one is, is next year's calendar is very similar to this year, which you're gonna see kind of this year's calendar to next year, but then two years out, just starting a week earlier. We'll get some of the rationale and reasoning for them. The second part of the, the calendar process and conversations we're having with staff within our calendars is around our adding more professional development days for our staff, and really being a learning organization for all of our, um, staff that work in our buildings. And then also look at conferencing, and how can we do conferences different versus the way that we've been doing conferences since I was a kid, sitting here in this building at Leilak Elementary School, um, forty-some years ago. And so through that, our calendars allow us to, um, have different options with that. So first off, I wanna talk about PD. So currently, we have three professional development days throughout the year. Um, with this new calendar, we're looking to have seven kind of scattered throughout the year. You know, ideally, kind of once a month, um, typically, except for around December and around May. Some of the calendars here doesn't kind of look like that, but typically, once a month, except for December and May, for a couple purposes. One, um, it allows our staff to continue to grow in their practice, whether they're in a classroom, whether they're a professional, an office staff, whatever role they have, is to give them real meaning, um, meaningful professional element to grow their work. is to give them real meaning, meaningful professional element to grow their work. The second part of it is to allow our students and staff time to breathe, so kind of have some natural breaks within each of the months, to kind of get a little time to, to relax, reflect, and get recharged for the upcoming lessons, the upcoming units. With that, we're also looking at doing conferences a little bit differently. So, typically, we have fall and winter conferences, or fall and spring. And so, what that happens is, there's a day where we come in, there's two nights. And we usually have an afternoon and two nights where families come in and meet for fifteen minutes with the, with the staff and teachers, and kind of talk about their kiddos. What we want to try to be able to do in this calendar is provide more on-demand and real-time conferencing with our families. And so, if a staff member, you know, has a phone call, or an email exchange, or they see them in the carpool line, or at Costco, or wherever they're at in the community, is to really to make sure our families have up-to-date information in real-time, not waiting just for that conferencing time, whether it be the fall or the spring. And so, really have the conversation with our staff, what conferences can look like. So, moving into the, the calendar specifically, so we looked at next year, so if you go on the website, you're gonna see two different types of calendars. There's a staff calendar and a family calendar. The staff calendar has all the days kind of laid out, what's a workshop day, what's a PD day, what's a holiday, what's this, that, and the other thing. The family calendar is just really, is there school today, or is there not school today? And so, just for ease of this conversation to see on the screen, we have the family calendar set up so you can see kind of the clear days, our days are in session. And then the grayed out, or the blue days, are the days that we do not have school, whether the weekend or some other type of time that we don't have. So, looking at this year and kind of moving on to next year, is we have the staggered start, so it's really just kind of moving everything over a day. So, really, the first day of, of students for our secondary, just the sixth and ninth grade, would be on August twenty-sixth. The next day for secondary, for the rest of secondary, our seventh, eighth, and then ten, eleven, twelve would be August twenty-seventh. And then during that week would be ready, set, go for all of our K-five students, or pre-K-five. And then we would start the first day of school after Labor Day, which would be September third. Now, you take that kind of start, which is similar to this year, and then you go to the end of the year. This year, we end school on, last day of kiddos is May thirtieth, staff comes back May thirty-first, and graduation is that following day. You're gonna look on here and go, wait a second, if it's the same as last year, why is school going until June third, and then staff have to come back June fourth? Why is there three days different if we're just doing the same thing next year? Well, there's, there's two things, two reasons or rationale for it. The first one is our winter break. This year, our winter break is a week and a day. We have one week and then on Monday, and then we come back on Tuesday. Next year, we have a winter break that is a week and three days. So, there's kind of two extra days right there. And then the third day comes where this year's a leap year. So, we have obviously February twenty-ninth, and next year we don't. So, that becomes three years. If you're looking at the three-day difference, it's a two-day longer winter break. And then without the leap year, kind of gets us the difference of where our calendar is this year to where it potentially could be next year, if this is the calendar that the board chooses to go with. Now, with that here being said, I kind of went over the, the first day of school. Looking at our quarter breaks and semester breaks. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Looking at our quarter breaks and semester breaks here of, of kind of where you see those fall, which we talked about, and the last day of school is on June third. And then also looking at our professional development dates, and kind of where they're spread out throughout the course of the year for both our students and staff, and then our teacher and our grading days, there's six of them. So, the reason there's six is there's two at the beginning there during workshop week, and then there's one at the end of each quarter. There's a grading day the day after each of the quarter or semester ends.
So, Mark, go back to one slide. Can you go back a slide? Okay. Go forward one. Okay, so, just something for the board to take a look at. And this is, you know, somebody says, okay, well, what's the difference, what's this giving us another week start for really your due for us? If you were to take it to twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, which we're proposing for next year, again, to provide families time this summer. So, of course, one break is October thirty-first, which is not aligned with the M E A. Semester one break is January sixteenth, two weeks after the holiday break, so kids are gonna be coming back, taking their final exams. I do think we have March twentieth, which is aligned with spring break, and then the end of the school year is, is June third. So, you know, people say, well, what, what is the new calendar pushing it back? Part of the rationale for that is, okay, it aligns the quarters with other natural breaks within the calendar. So, that may come up eventually. Share it ahead of time. Sorry, Mark.
No, we're good. So, that's the twenty-four, twenty-five. And then now, looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, is starting the school year a week earlier. I will get into some of the benefits of kind of what that looks like if we just start the school year five days earlier. Both from the starting five days, and you can kind of see where the end of school falls there as well. Again, we would continue with the staggered start. So, it'd be August eighteenth would be the first day for our sixth grade and ninth grade. August nineteenth would be the rest of secondary, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve. We would run ready, set, go conferences for three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then secondary would start on a Thursday. They'd start Thursday, August twenty-first. That would give them two days to kind of get in their routines, get in their interactive modeling guided discoveries, a lot of those routine building that they do at the elementary level, do that, have two days to really focus on that, and then be able to start right away on Monday, the twenty-fifth there with kind of full functioning week. We still have a four-day Labor Day weekend, have the Friday off, and then obviously, the Monday for Labor Day. I'll get a little more here in the calendar in a second, but whatever, before I get to it, what I want to talk a little bit about, and Dr. Funk just kind of alluded to it, when we get into the quarters, you're gonna notice the quarters and semesters line up with natural breaks. So, the end of first quarter ends the Wednesday before M E A. So, students and staff go into M E A, first quarter's done, have a little long weekend, they come back after M E A, start second quarter. Second quarter ends the, the day before winter break. So, when we go to winter break, first semester's over, kind of like a college, you have your finals, you go off to winter break, you can relax from a student-staff standpoint, a staff standpoint. When you come back after winter break, then second semester starts. You don't come typically, now, they have a week, a week and a half of classes, and then we'll have finals before first semester's done. This way, it's a clean break, your first semester before winter break, you come back after winter break and start second semester. And then third quarter's done before spring break, and then the end of the school year is done the Friday before Memorial Day. So, the kids will be done May twenty-second, and then staff would come back that Tuesday, but the kids will be done May twenty-second. It also kind of aligns with, with our student rhythm, our kids, you know, they're ready to come back to school at the end of August, and they're ready to be done at the end of May, around Memorial Day, they're ready to be done for the summer. And it also provides more, excuse me, I'm wrong. It also provides more instructional time for all of our kids prior to spring testing, whether that's MCAs, whether that's AP testing, whatever the grade level standardized test that they have. It provides that, and also provides, kind of when that testing is done, the school year is, is done a couple of weeks after that. There's not that long break of a, of a month, a month and a few weeks, where you have school still in session after that spring testing period is over. So, looking at the, the calendar here, I kind of went over the beginning of the year, talked about when the breaks are, and see where they're lining, before M E A, winter break, spring break, and Memorial Day, and then they're done Friday, May twenty-second, before we go to Memorial Day break. Then also provides the collaboration, so you can see, this still has that PD built in for all of our staff, kind of every, at once a month, their type of routine, as well as the workshop or grading days at the end of each quarter or semester. So, some of the responses that we've got, we have two buildings left, actually, tomorrow morning, we have two buildings to finish it up, otherwise, we've been around to all of our sites. So, gaining some of the feedback we've got from our staff, as well as this has been posted online for families and students or others to participate. So, some of the things, themes that we've been hearing from the feedback of over six hundred responses so far, is they like ending the school year in May. They like aligning our quarters and semesters to natural breaks. They like the professional development time and collaboration time built into the calendar. They like the more time before the end-of-the-year assessments. They like the longer breaks that, that had during the year, and then the earlier spring break, which fell because where their natural breaks were. Some of the things that they were concerned with, some of the themes that they had were, August is a time many families vacation, whether their sports are done, and kind of before school starts, summer sports, whether it's soccer, or baseball, or softball, whatever it is, kind of that couple of weeks before school starts. Also, some with, with kids that are college-age, being able to bring their kids to college, kind of that late-August area. Another concern was, our calendar now will not align with other school districts around in terms of when we actually start the first day of school. There's concern about limiting possibility of summer employment for our secondary students with the seasonal tourist-based employment opportunities that we have. It doesn't align with some of our summer camps, kind of when they start, when they end currently, and there may not be childcare available that last week of May or beginning of June before other districts are done. And then, they're concerned that it may shorten the summer for families, where August is what they, a prime time for, for their summer family time. So, that was some of the feedback that we, we heard from them.
Mark, does our start align with other school districts at all?
No.
Okay.
And that's a lie?
No. So, lastly, kind of our next steps, we're finishing up the, the buildings tomorrow. And then after winter break, we have two community conversations set up, one on January fourth at Oakland Middle School, and then the following Thursday at Stillwater Middle School. And then we'll be back here to the board at the end of January, the January twenty-third meeting for approval of both the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar for next year, and then also two years out with the twenty-five, twenty-six. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to go back to each year and any slides here throughout the conversation that we're gonna have.
Great. Can I ask one question on the twenty-four, twenty-five? Were the conferences changing to that on-demand format in that calendar?
Yes.
So, that will change? Okay.
The only difference is the delayed early start.
Okay. All right, I'm trying to, I, I agree, and I, I had mentioned this in an earlier conversation with Dr. Funk. I feel like, really, what this whole conversation with the community and staff has opened up is this age-old, are we gonna start before Labor Day or after Labor Day? And we've been starting before Labor Day for quite a while, in a number of years now, but it seems like we're getting more of that, less, do we want to revisit that? And I feel like that's an important question for the board, because that is gonna drive what this calendar, what all these calendars could potentially look like in terms of that pre-Labor Day or post-Labor Day start. Are there any strong feelings on that?
Just to, just, I had Mark, we don't have it in the presentation, but I had him figure out a calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, for example. How late, if we, if we start at post-Labor Day with everything else, where do we go to school till the sixth of June?
So, it'd be Friday, June, June fifth. I do want to add that next year is the earliest Labor Day is. So, next year, Labor Day is on September first.
Okay, so, so it'd be June fifth with the September first start, so if we go to a September seventh start?
We'd be looking at the second, whatever that calls.
End of the second week of June.
Yeah.
And, and that would still improve the alignment of professional development, still get your professional development organizational things that need to be changed to facilitate just a more effective learning environment?
Right, we would try to still incorporate more professional development.
But it won't align with quarters, I mean, obviously, we can't, all of that, those benefits go away. But we'd, we'd still build in the PD days and some of that collaboration time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if there's conversation or thoughts on if we feel as a board, when we talk with the community and when we hear, I know it's always been a very divided community. What are your thoughts?
I'll jump in.
Yeah?
We definitely did get some feedback, well, quite a bit of feedback, on the pre-Labor Day start, as we do every year. So, it's definitely a, a regular theme. And, just today, I was kind of digging around, just curious, what, like, why are we starting before Labor Day, and what is the law, when did it start? And, in my little bit of research, I figured out, it started in nineteen eighty-five, and it really has a lot to do, and I know Dr. Funk has talked, talked about this multiple times, with tourism. And, all the arguments that were given in every article I read had to do with tourism and the economy. I thought it was more agriculture, but it really, in Minnesota, is much more tourism. And, while that is a valid reason for people to be concerned with the economy of Minnesota, for me, it is not a valid educational reason for why we need to push back the start for our students. Furthermore, I was thinking back to the whole, the testing piece, that we actually have less days by starting after Labor Day before our actual spring testing. And, that whole accountability piece came in the early two thousands, so after nineteen eighty-five, we then have no child left behind. And so, that accountability piece was not factored into that original law. And, it makes much more sense to have the learning that kids are getting tested on happening before the test, and less learning happening after the test dates are, have already passed. So, for me personally, for educational reasons, I very much support having our calendar start before Labor Day. And I, I genuinely like the idea of having the natural breaks that are happening with this new proposal, because that, to me, not only is educationally better, but makes it logical for why we do this. So, that's just where I stand on the Labor Day piece.
Thank you for sharing that. Yes, Director Petrie?
Thank you for doing that research today. Yeah, I seem to recall that the, the resort owners in Minnesota
Yes.
were very, very successful in lobbying the legislature at one point. And, that is why we have, that's why we have that law. They just, and, you know, I'm more power to them, I mean, they, they have their own interest at heart. But as you say, we're concerned here about educational outcomes. And, I was really struck when I looked at the, the calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. I think that there was like a five-day weekend for M E A, that was like, the first quarter was over, a five-day weekend for M E A, two full weeks off at the semester over the holiday, and then a full week off for spring break, and those fall at the quarter. And, I was actually speaking with a high school student tonight, who was telling me that, you know, he's thinking about all the stuff that he's gonna have to do during Christmas break, Sam, and thinking about, thinking about tests that he's gonna, finals that he's gonna have to come back and do. I just think that aligning our calendar in the way that makes more sense academically, because students have more instructional time under their belt before they do assessments, and also just giving them that full-stop break, you know, and giving them three times during the school year where they have a considerable amount of time to reset. Is that gonna solve the mental health crisis for students? No, it's not. But it's one more thing that we can do to nibble away at the edges of that, of that crisis. So, so, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm on the side of education and not on the side of the resort owners, so.
I think that natural breaks are a huge benefit. I think what we were just talking with about how I have a lot of work to do over break, it's not a true break. It, it just doesn't feel as long, it doesn't feel like a true break, because I'm doing homework over break, I have to come back, prepare for finals, and you don't get that break aspect, it just feels like a extended time off. It's not a true break. And I think another benefit that is really beneficial is the test dates being, having more time to prepare for tests. And especially, I've taken a lot of AP tests, and the time after the AP test does go to waste. It's, one of the hardest parts of an AP class is that you have to do all the coursework before the test, and you have less time to prepare. So, I think that having more time to prepare for those standardized tests is another huge benefit. So, in my mind, those are the biggest benefits as far as academics go, are the natural breaks and testing.
How, can I ask you a question? How do you feel about pre-Labor Day, post-Labor Day start?
I think, for me personally, I can't speak on other students, but I think by mid to late August, I'm generally ready to go back to school. But during May, in the spring, I'm ready to be down at school. I think with, just as far as the weather goes, when you start to see, like, the leaves sprouting, trees turning green, I think I'm, I'm ready for summer break earlier in the spring.
And you're probably in shorts when it's fifty. And the one thing I've noticed about our calendar is, I feel like because we've always had this, are we gonna be a pre-Labor Day or a post-Labor Day, that our calendar reflects board, boards that have tried to make everyone happy, and they're, and... reflects board, boards that have tried to make everyone happy, and they're, and sometimes when you do that, you don't make anyone happy, right? You're not making people happy that want to start after Labor Day. And you're not truly realizing the benefit of a pre-Labor Day start in the way that Dr. Funk has suggested here. So to me, that's why I keep going back to the decision really is, when are we gonna start? Unless, whatever we pick, let's do it the right way, so that we are actualizing academic and mental health benefits for students and families.
So I, I think one of the, I've seen a lot of the feedback, survey-wise or feedback that the board has received from, from community members, from staff members, I think one of the, one of the concerns I'm hearing from staff members is, okay, we've got a lot more professional development days built into the calendar. If I don't like PD, okay, what does that mean for me? And, and I think it's important to note, you know, and we've, we've had a number of conversations with teacher leaders on this issue. And one of them came up with this term. He said, "We shouldn't call it professional development days, we should call it professional days." And yes, there's gonna be a developmental component to, to some of the days where if we've got responsive classroom training and we need teachers to do it, okay, we've got more time that built in throughout the year, there's a cost savings there, we're not having to pay for subs, et cetera. But there's gonna be some days where, all right, yep, we want you to work on this bit of PD in the morning, whether it's math-related, you know, literature rate-related or whatever, but then we're gonna give you time to work with your collaborative teams and, you know, work on the professional things that you're doing. You know, colleges, how often do college professors, you know, they teach how many times a week? Where our teachers are teaching multiple classes a day. And so we get on this treadmill, and we're just going, going nonstop. So one of the concepts of this is, let's build these days in, give people time to reflect, work together, and good professional development, good time to reflect on what you learned, and good time to work together as a team. Or if you need to go and meet with those parents who we need to talk to with your students, great. But it's different than our current system, where we got three PD days during the year, we're gonna turn the fire hose on and, you know, get whatever you can out of it, and then, and then go back. So it's just a totally different approach. And a lot of people are, okay, scratching their heads, they're concerned about it, what's this gonna look like for me? And so that's where I, I really focus on the professionalism side of things with our staff. And I think if we do it right, I think this could be really beneficial for the students in the district, our staff members, but we have to make sure we get things right and implement it in a proper manner.
Sure. So I'm thinking it like an algebraic equation, you wanna break it down into simplest terms, right? So there's the give, the give and take. So you, you give up Labor Day and a couple months in August, you get Memorial Day in June. If you have this conversation right now, closer to the beginning of the year, you're concerned about Labor Day. If we had the same conversation in April and May, people would say, yeah, let's, let's be done by, by Memorial Day and get that time in June. And also then, if people are presented with a calendar, and if they don't like it, they're gonna speak up. You know, they're gonna be writing letters and speaking in court. If they do like it, hey, fine, I like it. So we're not hearing from those people that really love that, the new calendar. So if people like the calendar, speak up, you know, get, get that vote in there. And, yeah, so make your voices heard also if you like what you're saying, rather than if you don't like what you're saying.
That's Director Thielander.
Thank you. Well, you know, I always appreciate the opportunity just to figure out what things can, can we control as a school board that can make a difference. You know, obviously, the calendar change, I think there's a lot of moving parts that go into that. You know, and obviously, having some of the input that's been shared around some of the opportunities and the concerns. One thing I'm interested in is, is what has been, what has, how has the question been phrased? Is there something where it's a question, are you in support of this or not? I just could be interested to see what is that sentiment? Because obviously, I, I understand our decision-making hierarchy as a board has to be students first, teachers and staff next, and then community after that. But I think we also have a really unique situation that we have a lot of stakeholders that this impacts, especially when we're dealing with minors. I mean, that impacts families, and that impacts the teachers. So as I'm looking at this, I'm just trying to better understand, do we anticipate there to be some type of cost benefit to doing this? You know, is it, you know, how is it alignment with other types of school districts? You know, is that, you know, what are some of the causes and effects of these decisions when we're making these types of things in, in a complex world that we live in? And, you know, what does that look like from a teacher retention, teacher hiring standpoint, when that's outside the scope of other districts? And, and I also think, you know, if this is being based on improving learning outcomes and score-based outcomes, for me, I, I just, I haven't seen the research. It just seems like some of the research that's been out there, you know, it, you know, I know University of Minnesota did one maybe five, or seven, eight, 10 years ago. Doesn't seem some of the outcomes have really produced those results from an academic outcome standpoint. So, you know, those are things that from my standpoint, that I'm looking at of, you know, this is gonna involve significant community input, and, you know, and, you know, we, it's impossible to make decision in a vacuum, because there are some causes and effects that I wanna be mindful of, and obviously, is this something that we feel will, will move the needle to improve student outcomes? To me, it seems like some of the school start times, there's so many health benefits that are tied to that. The research is impossible to ignore. I, again, I just haven't seen that from a, a calendar standpoint.
So I can talk to, to a couple of those pieces, if that's okay?
Please do.
So, you know, I, I think that one of the things that we talk about is stress, mental health with students, with staff, et cetera. And you're right, you know, if you take a look at the research on, on calendar start times, whatever, whatever the model you're looking at, it's pretty inconclusive about academic return. However, it does, as Sam just mentioned, and I've seen this over a number of years, it creates a separate, or a, a new system of, it reduces stress on the system. All right? And, and again, if I were to start from scratch and say, okay, I'm going to create a system where you're gonna come to school on some arbitrary date that the legislature decides, okay, and it's gonna be in the middle of September or after September, whatever date it is, all right? Then I'm gonna send kids to school till the winter break, and then I'm gonna make them come back and do final exams three weeks later, and then I'm gonna make them go into Who in their right mind, who's been in education for any period of time, would do that? They wouldn't. So what we have here is a system that is, is hodgepodge together based upon something that comes out of St. Paul that is not aligned to, and so it's not aligned to, to student learning. And having been a teacher, having been a principal, having been a superintendent for a number of years, you know, he didn't wanna, Sam didn't wanna speak for the students, but I can tell you, teachers, and Mark could tell you as a, as a former teacher and principal in this district, do not want to be into school into June. All right? We had a calendar committee meeting a few weeks ago to show them these versions, okay? We don't wanna be into school in June. Can you, can you like, start us, keep us now, but keep us out of June, was really the, the feedback we got. And so, no, it's, it's not. But so, Andrew, the, and, and back to the financial side of it, again, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're making some shifts to the calendar regardless of when it starts, because we need more PD. But our intent is to add more professional development days during the school year, so we don't have the sub-cost that we currently have, and it can provide staff more focused time. So, you know, is there research that it impacts academics? It's mixed. But I think you're gonna, if, if the board chooses to do this, they will find that, they will have students supportive of this, they will have staff supportive of this after they go into it and do it. So, and as far as you asked, the initial question you asked, did we ask a yes/no question, do you like this or not? No, we said, we're considering it, we'd like your honest candid feedback on it. And that's, you know, what you've really seemed a summary of tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Director Thielander?
I have a couple of questions in regard to professional development.
Yep.
So how many days of professional development do teachers get now?
They get three during the school year now.
Okay. I mean, the, the new calendar, the proposed calendar talks about nine, and so how is that different from what they get right now?
So, Mark, you can help me out here, but it's two, we're counting two of the professional development days, the first week of school, and then seven throughout the year.
So if you look at the current calendar right now, you're gonna see there's actually seven PD days, and that there's only three because workshop week, those four days are technically PD days, although we don't recognize them all as PD days, meaning some will workshop time. What we're trying to do is make a calendar that's more reflective on, so, so if you look at this year, if you look at the calendar from a staff standpoint, you're gonna see four PD days in a row. If you look at these calendars, you're gonna see of the four days of workshop, two of the days are gonna be workshop days, which means there are no meetings, no district meetings, no building meetings, there's time for staff to work in their classrooms or their spaces to ready for their kids. And then there's two days that are PD days where both of you are, you know, welcome back, building meetings, professional development, et cetera, to really tease out what that workshop week really looks like. And then, so that's where the nine comes from. You have seven during the school year, and then there's two at the beginning of the year during workshop. And if you look at the calendar this year, you're gonna see, wait a second, there's seven, you already have your seven. The reality is we don't, because four of those are workshop week, and there's only three through throughout the school year.
So is this new calendar gonna represent an increase in the number of hours of professional development?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. And then one other question I had in regard to professional development. You know, I know that in the past, Stillwater and a lot of other districts will do like a late start, or early release, or things like that. Obviously, that was not something that got incorporated here. Is there some sort of philosophical reason for that?
Having been a superintendent for quite a while, families don't, when we're talking childcare issues, and that is a like, non-starter for a lot of families, it really is, so.
It is hard, I remember those.
So we've just recommended we don't do that.
But not for, because it's not a good approach for professional development, it's more just that it's really hard on families.
It's impact on the community, yep.
Okay.
Well, one thing that I think, I also wanna acknowledge from staff that I heard is, and I would like for you to speak to it, is I believe that for professional development to be effective, you mentioned that fire hose, where it needs to be timely, manageable, relevant to what you're doing. And I think that some of the hesitation is, I don't think that our current professional development maybe checks all the boxes for staff in every way. Can you maybe speak to that? Because I think maybe that's the hesitation, that people are saying, well, now there's more, but maybe the value's not there.
So one of the things that I'm learning, when we're planning staff development in Stillwater, there's a team that does it that has teachers on it. But the team is not representative of the, the SE, SCEA contract talks about, they will have 50% of the representation on the staff development committee that the SCEA picks, they don't. And so if teachers don't feel that they are having a voice in what they need, they're gonna have some concerns. And so that's something we are addressing as a district, to make sure that the teacher voice is, is part of the process, so that we are actually creating professional development that meets the needs of our teachers.
And to me, it's almost two issues, where there's a separate issue of how can we improve content of professional development? But what I like about this calendar is, is the delivery mechanism is there.
We're putting it in place now, we just, that, we just have to be able to make sure it's effective, and that's our charge.
Can you speak, the people, people that I talked to that want the pre, the after-Labor Day start, they often will talk about the legislation and the laws and how they feel like, how do we get away with starting pre-Labor Day? And I mean, that's just a common FAQ. Could you maybe just explain how a district can start?
You guys, you guys have been doing it a lot longer before, than I got here, but no, I can tell you how that works. So, so there's two ways that you can start school before Labor Day as a school district. The first way, and the simplest way, is if you have a $400,000 project in one of your school buildings in the summer, you can, you can say, here's our calendar, we're applying for the waiver, you get the waiver. The second way's a lot more complicated, and that would be if you were gonna approve, like, a multi-three-year program of, okay, we're gonna start early, you're a 45-15 calendar, you actually have to go out and have to have multiple community meetings, and then you have to convince somebody in the Department of Education to sign off that they're okay with this. So most districts that start early just use the, the waiver that is part of the construction waiver, and that's what Stillwater's used historically.
Director Thielander? Oh, no? No?
And so as we look at some of these upcoming decisions that the board is being presented with, and again, I, I really do appreciate the opportunity for you to kind of bring forth these ideas. You know, for, I'm trying to make some system-wide changes, I think it's great to, let's take a strong look at what can we do to really make a difference. So I do appreciate having these thoughtful discussions, and I think it's a great opportunity for the communities, the community to, you know, find ways to focus on our students. But as we look at kind of the school start times, the calendar changes, the high school schedule decisions, as a board, can we look at those as independent decisions one of one another?
All three of them are independent.
Okay. So nothing that will come back, material information that would impact, you know, you know, potential unexpected outcome?
I don't think so. No, I think that, yeah, I think, so, so thank you for, for asking that. You know, we're, we're having community meetings coming up here in January on start times and calendar, and we're gonna talk, start times here in a few minutes. I think we're anticipating sometime this spring, I know the high school's going out, visiting different schools right now, to see what different schedules are, some of their, their leadership team is. I anticipate a high school administration coming later this spring to, to share their findings, and they again are proposing that we do this in the fall of '25-'26, again, to provide them time to prepare the courses, because if we do have the chance to offer seven per day or, or something else, we are gonna be adding elective credits. And so staff is gonna need time to, to create those courses. So, but they're all independent decisions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Director Havert? Thanks. Just kind of wanted to take in on a comment that actually just came up again about the systemic changes that we're being asked to make in this, in this calendar, and also in the start time decision in particular. And this has been something that I've been really trying to process, all the feedback that we're getting from community members and from families, and, and now tonight through our online survey as well. And I find myself trying to tease out, as a board member, what are our roles and duties as Director Thielander was just alluding to. And for me, after listening to months and months, actually years of information and data on kind of the academic outcomes of our students, to me, there really is a, a very strong need to move in a new, new direction, that our status quo is not cutting it for our students and for our community. And looking at systemic changes like the calendar and the start times, for me, is very exciting, that this is something tangible that we can do to move the needle. And that is kind of how I've started to frame the feedback in what we've been hearing, what I've been hearing from people, is, is this going to, is the feedback and the challenges that are coming to us going to impact student learning in a tangible way? Or are they more challenges that individual people are gonna have to deal with if this change actually happens? And, and actually, it came back, Joan, would you mind flipping back a couple slides to the, or, okay, Mark's got it, thanks, the online feedback, the key themes? I thought this was super interesting for the, in this, oop, wait, the positive one, yep, yes. For this, on this slide, the professional development and the assessments, for me, those are systemic benefits to doing this calendar change. And then if you flip to the next slide, for me, most of these are individual challenges that people are going to have to overcome. Not to diminish those in any way, that'll be a definite challenge for a lot of families, but if we try to make systemic changes to individual challenges, that's where we kind of of get yanked around all over the place. We want to make very deliberate changes that will impact the most amount of kids and for the right reasons. And for me, the academic and social, emotional, mental health issues are the right reasons. So, I am completely sold on the whole idea of changing the calendar. My big question tonight is how did we get from a proposal to do this next year to a proposal to do it in two years?
Look at that slide. That's. It's summer camps, it's childcare, it's family vacations. And so, again, I don't, I mean, I, I think it's hard for families in a normal year to wait for the board to December to say, okay, here's our calendar for next year. And so, my recommendation, we're shaving another week off the front end of it. So, okay, let's give our families the benefit of the doubt here and, and provide them a little bit of extra time. So, that, that's the, that's the real, that slide right there is the real, the real reason.
The reason, and, and I understand that piece. I guess, and I'm going to get ahead of us a little bit here, we are basically by shifting this whole plan, we are looking at a two-year process here. And I know that our next proposal is going to be looking at changes for next year as well. And that's the piece that I'm really struggling with is I am all for these changes, I think that there's a lot of valid reasons for this. I am having trouble with prolonging that over a two-year period and why we're getting a proposal to do it next year versus in two years for this change. So, that is, that is the spot where I'm at right now and where I'm struggling with the recommendations tonight.
I mean, I, again, I, it's just, it's, I don't want to rush our families here, you know, and, and the other, the other thing I, I think it's important for folks to know, and I think this is really key, is your, your feedback is, is important, all right? And we have families saying this and, okay, as superintendent, I've heard what you're saying and I'm listening to it, you know, and I'm, and I'm making an adjustment to the proposal based upon what I've heard, okay? So, I'm honoring that. The other thing that I'll say that's really interesting about this slide, switching gears just for a second, you know, I've had, as Mark said, Mark and I have been going off all over the district, talking to different staff members. I have staff members come up to me and say, you know what, I understand you're trying to reduce stress within the system with these breaks throughout the year, with what we're doing with professional development, giving us more professional time, but you're adding more stress to my life because I, I live someplace else and I have daycare someplace else and that's an issue of mine that I have. And so, you're adding more stress to my life. And so, yes, acknowledged, I am, or we are, or whatever the board is, whoever makes this decision. But as you alluded to, these are all individual rationalities, it's not a system-wide change. And so, but, so to be, to be frank, it's because of the individual feedback that I have recommended the delay for the year, which is, you know, impactful on the system in the short term, but in the long term, I, I think that we'll be okay.
And you feel the hybrid kind of that next year's calendar get to enough change?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're going to try something different with PD next year. And that'll give us some time to, to get some pieces in there, yes.
I, it, it strikes me that with the calendar that you're proposing for twenty-five, twenty-six that starts in the third week of August, that might be unusual for the state of Minnesota. I guess I'm wondering, are there any other districts in Minnesota that start that early? And what about districts in other states? Do, did you do any evaluation on that?
Like districts in other states start a lot earlier. Okay, a lot earlier, August first. Districts in Minnesota, southwest Minnesota hasn't had a number of districts that start early. District I came from has been starting early for about seven years. And very, you know, feedback there is they never want to go back. They love it, staff, community. Parent feedback is, I want my kids in school in August, they're ready. And then staff feedback, I want my kids to go back home at the end of May, they're ready. It's when, when Mark talked about the cyclical calendar, that is consistent with my experience with, with the natural cycles.
And I remember this through the presentation, Dr. Funk, and I think it needs to be emphasized, if a family has a tradition, a, something that is meaningful to their family, they can call their child out for.
We, we do it every, every week of the year during the school year, we have families taking their kids out of school. You know, and so, and so the other thing is having been from an all-state school that starts early, state fair is huge for farming communities and 4H, FFA. And if you're going to state in anything, to show an animal, to play football, go, we support you and we want you to be successful and come back and, you know, we'll embrace you. So, that's, that's not a, yeah, I, I think the district would be very supportive of that, in families that do that, so that's a great question.
One other question I had really quick, and I know it wasn't in this presentation, but I hear about it a lot, just anecdotally. Can you speak to, I mean, are there more behavior issues that we are managing at the end of the school year as we get into June, first out, outside of testing?
Absolutely. It's, it, it switches to MCAs are done, APs are done, okay, we got to keep the lid on as, as we move in further and further into the school year.
So, you know, I do believe, you know, communities tend to adjust to schools, whether their start times or calendars, but obviously, you know, and I think there's a lot of families that have the ability to pivot based on what changes are implemented. Based on what you've seen in kind of southwest Minnesota, seeing some of the schools doing or in some of the schools in the south, how do you think this helps or hurts more traditionally disadvantaged students? You know, obviously, I think, obviously more school days I think would always be more beneficial, but there's a lot of things that go into that and doesn't seem like this is adding more school days. So, so that's a question I had, additional question, and also, again, looking at the, the upcoming decisions we have to make, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it just helps me to understand the importance. From your professional perspective and for what you've seen and what your other, from a superintendent lens, which ones, which are the decisions do you feel add the most value to our students?
They all do.
Okay.
So, they do. I, I think if we're looking system-wide, this is, this proposal reduces stress on the system from a, from a, from time, it provides time, it provides space. So, I, that's where, so this is stress, okay? I think if you're talking start times, it is, it's mental health, it's, it's academics, it's kids prepared to come to school, it's kids coming prepared to learn. So, that's my take on that. And as far as the school schedule, it's additional opportunities for our students that they currently do not have. And I think all three of those things are, okay, reducing stress, providing professionals more opportunity to interact, we have kids who are not zombies coming to school anymore and we've got more opportunities for them. I mean, that's kind of an interesting way of saying it, I guess, but that's, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Chair Sherman. So, listening to all of my colleagues have been saying, my question is, I'm looking at some of the key themes here with respect to the online feedback. So, we're saying if we go with this, that's the calendar we have in front of us, families are indicating, from what my colleague here said, with respect to some of the concerns that families have, many families vacation in August, so we're going to start one week earlier in August, limit summer employment for teens, we talked about tires and seasonal based employment, doesn't align with summer activities, excuse me, and families are complaining about summer camps and all that. So, if we decide to give them the two years that we're talking about, what changes? Because none of this will go away, right? All of these things remain. Are we saying as families will adjust to?
Some families have said, okay, we've got our trip to Europe, we've already planned it, okay? Others have my kids in this camp or this camp. Yeah, we're telling them, it's coming, now you're going to need to adjust to it, which is what it would be. Yep.
So, I, it's interesting that as we start talking about this, I, my, my mindset was, well, are we just starting a week earlier? But it really is, as you said, Chair Sherman, that it's not a question of starting a week earlier, it's starting a week earlier, we're starting a week later, really. Because we don't do it, it doesn't give you much benefit to start when we start now. It does seem kind, and I hadn't even thought about it in that, that light, that it's really a broader question. You know, at a personal level, I, you know, I, I think it's great to start earlier and, then again, I'm easy like that. You know, I, I'm not one to hold on to those, you know, oh, I have to do this, this, this week of the year, every year, you know, it's just, tell me where we're supposed to be, somewhere I'll be there. But, you know, I mean, I think it is respectful to, to hold off for a year, I think, I think realizing that people are, do have those concerns, maybe already have something set up going on in, in August. And we, we talked about it on the, for the mountain bike team next year, you know, when are we going to be able to go to camp for the, for the mountain bike team? I mean, we are making those decisions already right now. So, I, I think it is, it isn't, I, I think that's a respectful way to look at that feedback that you're getting. But then also moving forward and overcoming those objections, more communication out just by what you said, hey, if you've got something you're going to do, if you, if you've got a prize big, bring it to the fair, you know, I mean, and we'll see when you get back. You know, I mean, it's not a, you know, as long as that, that message gets out so that families understand that we respect your traditions, we respect the, you know, your, your activities, then I think it's, I think it's manageable. And, and the reality is families will adjust, I mean, and I know that happens and then we, we all do that every day about things all the time, so.
One thing, and I did bring this up earlier, but I know this is a significant issue, is that election day. And so, I noticed, you know, we, we do have school on election day. Is that something that you're thinking is going to change by the time we vote on it? Or are you thinking you're going to work on changing the location?
They're not going to, you guys just approved the location.
Because I think that for me personally, I am having school on that day on a national election.
For the school district or for the school?
For that school.
Oh, no, we can change that. We can make that.
And that's, for any school, I guess it's just, as I told.
No, we could, we could make that, we could make that a.
I agree.
An e-learning day of some sort, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Because I know that a lot of families do.
The other thing that, you know, we went to, we went to the, the mosque, they had the East African celebration. Mark, when is Eid next year?
Uh, next year's May thirty-first, which is PD day.
May?
Which is March, excuse me, March thirty-first.
So, we have that, for students, that day will be off next year.
Correct. And the following calendar is March twentieth, which would be spring break, which is proposed, so actually the next two years will be off.
And I do appreciate us looking at those holidays and those cultural importance that beyond kind of a mainstream majority culture.
Yep.
Because we are hearing that, so thank you for being responsive to that.
Good question, Greg, thank you. So, right now, we have four days workshop days and three PD days. Are they separate?
Correct.
Okay, so that's seven, right?
Yeah.
So, but if we change the calendar, we'll have nine PD days and within those PD days, two of those days will workshop days.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
What is the difference? What's the shift?
Okay, so getting too far into weeds. So, contractually, there's a hundred ninety-two days for staff, which all these calendars have to one recurring. Student contact days, there's a hundred seventy-two. So, there's a twenty student, there's twenty-day difference between staff and kids. This year, the breakdown has come to this as they go, there's five holidays that the, that the teachers get. There's seven PD days, there is four workshop days, and then there's four conference days. So, the conference days right now is there's a conference planning day for the fall and the spring, so that's two. And then there's a conference comp, which is the night when the, the teachers work the night, so a half day on a Monday and a half day on a Thursday, that's a comp day. The two con, the conference comp and conference planning in the fall and the conference planning and the conference comp in the spring, those four days, because between conferences different, don't need to be in that bucket anymore. Those four days now become PD days, which changes our three to seven. Probably more than you care to know, but just that, that structure.
No, it, it's important because, I mean, those workshop days, I was just thinking what the difference is and how important it was to students. I mean, it's all students impact, right? The development of teachers, staff, all the impact we're looking for is something that will be positive towards implementation, how students are safe. So, I just wanted to know, if we're limiting workshop days, I didn't realize that we were four conference days as well, that can be added to, so you have actually a lot more with those conference days. I thought maybe taking it with two of those workshop days and having nine PD days, something might be missing, but obviously not.
No, and we actually, I mean, the, the, the teachers now have two days of no meetings. So, right now, it's all PD, we kind of did a, hit them this type of thing this year. This, next year, we'll be very intentional, two of them to work in their spaces, two of them are PD days, to be more intentional about our time.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note that contractual days of the teachers remain the same, the student contact days remain the same. We are just creating within the system, we have more professional development for our staff.
So, in terms of making a decision on this, I don't have the timeline, is this January?
Twentieth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay. So, January twenty-third, what, what information, what more information do we need as a superintendent in order to make a calendar decision? Is there something that you feel like you're missing in terms of information? Like, for example, I'm hearing that we are kind of a pre, pre-labor, I mean, I'm sensing that we're supportive of a pre-Labor Day. Andrew, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, just, just to answer your, your question is, I think more information of what other districts are doing. So, you had some examples and any more of that, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
The people that have done it already, how's it worked for them?
Okay.
And how did their minds change for or against after it happened?
Okay, I can get you some information on that.
And then too, there's some, maybe more. About a breakdown of, of public comment, I mean, it would be nice if that's available.
Here's what I would suggest, and you got to be careful on how you do this, but we have these two public meetings. So, you could have some of the board members go to one of them, some of the board members go to another, and that way you can hear really candid feedback from folks on, on what people are saying. So, that, that's what I would recommend, but one of the board members won't be able to go because we can't have a quorum there. So, that, that would be helpful as well, I think.
Could I throw in, along with the, looking at other districts, I would also be curious if there are like private or charter schools, how they're kind of doing things, because I know at least from my experience, there are several private schools that start quite a bit earlier for the, with the intention of getting more days in before testing.
So, it's interesting, and I won't say who, but we had a, with start times, we had a meeting with a number of the private and other schools in, in the community last Friday. And we talked about calendars as well, and one of them said, well, we already start that week. So, so that was just interesting feedback. Now we'll have transportation, so.
Is there interest from the board in looking at an after Labor Day? Like looking, I know that you ran that calendar, does the board want to see that? Does, is that something that you're, anyone here is entertaining?
I would just be interested, just as getting all the full information available so we can.
I, I would just be interested, just as getting all the full information available, so we can compare the pros and cons and.
Yep, we can get that.
You know, was that, obviously it's kind of a, a status quo type of mindset within Minnesota? Um, it just would be helpful just for additional insight.
Yep.
And again, I wanna caution you, because it looks like, that is a really good one. It looks like June third or June fourth, whatever that end date is. It is gonna get significantly later in, um, calendar years. I mean, you're, you could potentially be going into the second week, right?
Mm-hmm.
June.
Yes, analysis one added, it'd be after, you gotta think when elementary's gonna start. So if we still start with ready, set, go conferences, then the elementary ones start till the Monday after Labor Day.
Yeah.
So.
But it would be good, it could be both.
Because they have these conferences, they normally they go up this place, but you use.
Just the board, I guess, if they're chasing that.
Good question. Yeah, I asked the same thing when I came here.
Could I ask one more quick question? Um, Dr. Funk, thank you.
Sorry.
Um, for the, um, community conversations that are coming up, I'm just curious, what is the intention for getting that information? Is it really to, like, still decide if we're moving forward on these proposals? Is it?
Again, it's, it's really, here's the, what, how we handled this in the, um, spring with some of the community conversations around the, the schools. Basically, we would have, Mark and I would do a presentation, here's the concepts. And then we'd break up into small groups and then discuss the concepts and what, okay, pros and cons. And what I'm thinking is board members, you could walk around and have discussions with folks as that's taking place. So, just really, just having community conversation on, um, impact and, and what thoughts would be. Um, so it's giving people an opportunity to interact and, and, you know, and chew on an issue.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Funk.
Oh, yeah, so, um, one thing I just kind of asked Dr. Funk, just, I think for, for the, good for the community to know, was I, I've always wondered if just, if you could just kind of share some, what we had mentioned around the stake or start times. I always was interested in why we have that, um, so I guess if you could just.
So, I don't, Mark, you can probably tell me, but a number of years ago, the district went to these ready, set, go conferences at the beginning of the year. And it provided staff members time to do some assessments of the students. And it provided teachers time to, really extended time to meet with the families before the school year. And so that's been the concept of it. I don't know how many years you've been doing it. Uh, but, so they do take two or three, or in some years they took four days. I think it was during COVID, they took four days, um, to, um, work with families and, Mark?
So it actually started, um, a couple of different bases. So the first one is looking at the secondary state restart. In two thousand seventeen, when we went to their grade configuration, you had a ninth grade in the middle school and a ninth grade at high school. It was really about getting those incoming, those first classes into the building with the web and link crew. And giving it kind of a acclimate to the building kind of one day before the rest of the, the building came in. So that was the sixth and ninth grade. Ready, set, go conferences started probably, oh boy, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, which is kindergarten at the elementary. Uh, so you'd get a few days to kind of get kindergarten students, kind of get, see where they're at coming in. And then in two thousand seventeen, when the, the state starts for secondary, um, we saw some good results with kindergartens. We did the whole K five. And in terms of doing some of our literacy assessments, instead of pulling teachers out of classrooms those first two weeks to individual assessment with kids, we could do it at the beginning of the year to maximize teacher time in front of students when the school year actually started. That was actually two days, um, it was just Monday, Tuesday, then COVID hit. And we had to do, that was back when you had to clean the spaces in between, you know, you had to do one session with families, clean the room. And actually we had to kind of double it from two days to four. Since then, we've added some additional assessments and, and beginning of the year, um, things with our families to kind of continue that. So what's I've been looking at, kind of in one of the calendar calls, and maybe, you know, and next year we're proposing other four days, cause there's a four day week. The following year we're gonna go to a shortened, um, on early year starters, a five day week. So we're looking at a three day ready, set, go, and then a two day starting on Thursday to get kids to acclimate before that first four days for following year. So, um, it was really around making sure kids have all the things that they need to start the school year, but also maximizing instructional time for our teachers in front of kids once a year starts.
Yes, Director Funch.
Um, Dr. Funk, um, would there be any disadvantage to us noticing those two meetings in January? So that we can all attend?
You could go.
I mean, if, I mean, it just, it strikes me that if we're asking the community to come and give us feedback, it's kind of dumb for us all not to be there and listen to it.
So, yeah, I mean, and where I, you're correct, and we should at least notice one of them, if not both, because, um, yeah. I think that's, that's great, that's a, it's a really good idea. Um, I don't want to be there both nights, but certainly could be, yeah.
We can notice that we have, so it's an option for people that want to.
Right, that's, yeah, exactly.
And people may not be able to come both nights, but I had, I had them both on my calendars, so, and I would like to hear what people have to say.
Sure, okay, great idea.
Um, so we have some little bubbles that are still not prepared to show, but I think we've got a good conversation going and we're, we're making progress. Um, if there aren't any more questions, we're gonna go to start times. All right, are you guys ready, or do you keep plowing through and you want to do a restroom break or anything?
So much fun, let's keep going, right?
Yes, exactly.
Well, thank you for coming, Dr. Funk, Jer, Jer Sherman, and everybody on the board. We've already touched on start time a little bit tonight, but let's delve deeper into this topic. Um, our last school board work session, you got to hear from Dr. Lisa Melzer, who is a nationally recognized expert on sleep. So she really dug deep into the science behind this proposal and why we're bringing it forward. She talked a lot about, um, she talked a lot about the, um, research that's out there related to sleep time. Sleep time has been a discussion we've been having in Stillwater for years and years, um, probably going back about twenty years. We've been talking about this at various times. Most recently, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, is when the board, I think, had the most serious discussion about this. And at that time, it was decided there was just too much other change going on in the district, it wasn't the right time. And so here we are, and we've had. When Dr. Melzer was here, she was talking about the circadian misalignment of our teens. And I think this is important for people who haven't watched her presentation, just to understand that there really is some biology behind this. It's not just because, you know, our, our kids could use an extra hour of sleep, cause they're, they're busy and all this. It's really about the change in their sleep pattern. Kids aren't tired until after ten o'clock, um, when they're in that teen, that puberty. And they're, they're in the peak of their run of sleep at seven AM, which is when we're asking them to get up and get moving and be ready for school. So there really is some science and biology behind this recommendation, that it's important for us all to have in the back of our head. Research is out there, we've talked about this before, I won't go into great detail, but for those who haven't seen some of our earlier presentations, I just wanted to have this information out again, that there are some academic outcomes, as well as social, emotional, and mental health things, as we talked about with the last proposal. That's really what the board is focused on right now, is trying to make sure that we are preparing the very best environment for our students to be successful. When we talk about teens, dark times, and the impact, it makes a lot of sense, there's research, people have been talking about this for decades. The impact on our early, our younger kids has been a question within our community. Okay, great, this is good for our older kids, but what about those younger kids? Now we're asking them to get up early and be ready to learn. The research is showing us, though, that those kids are ready. They're ready early in the morning, a lot of them just naturally wake up earlier. I have a little one that I keep her locked in her room until six. No, she knows that when her clock turns to six, she can wake up, and she's up. Often I hear her in there at five thirty getting, mom, mom. So kids are just, they're wired to get up earlier. And the research also shows that they're able to adjust bedtimes easier. They're tired at, in the evening, so it's easier for them to fall asleep than it is for our teens. Um, some of our teachers will be telling you that the prime instruction time is in that morning. They're ready to learn in the morning, they're tired in the afternoon. So teachers often want that morning block for all of those math and sci, or math and reading lessons. Our goal, as we talked about with the last proposal, is really to help our students be successful. To address their mental health and physical health needs, and ultimately in a fiscally responsible manner. You will, that'll be more important as Mark gets into what this really means logistically. There are ways that we could do things that would cost us a lot of money, and there's ways we can do things that would be cost neutral. And that's really what we're trying to do, is be fiscally responsible too. You have worked with us on our Pony Plan, our strategic plan for the last year. So this shouldn't be surprising to you to see this up here. What we're proposing is really aligned with your strategic plan. We're looking at how are we going to have good outcomes academically? How are we gonna address those social, emotional, mental health needs? And how are we gonna make sure that we're really looking at this through an equity lens too, what's good for all of our kids? People have been asking us, what about, you know, we say this is about mental health, but what are our numbers? What does it look like? What's the data here in Stillwater? So we looked at the Minnesota Student Survey. This is a survey that's given by the state every three years. And looking specifically at our secondary students, grade eight, grade nine, and eleven. The survey asks questions about their mental health and wellbeing. And you will see that this is an area of concern, not just in Stillwater, across the state. Especially post-COVID, our kids are struggling. You will see that, um, the majority of our high school kids are dealing with things like depression, anxiety, the inability to stop worrying. And those numbers have increased significantly since the time the survey was issued in twenty nineteen, as much as twelve percent. Um, across the board, it's been an increase in the number of students who are reporting these sorts of concerns. Nearly thirty percent of our middle and high school students who took the survey indicated that they have some type of mental health, or behavioral, or emotional problem. That's concerning, and those are the sorts of things that we're trying to address with this. Research also tells us that our thirteen to eighteen year olds need eight and a half to nine point two five hours of sleep. And according to the Minnesota Student Survey, our kids are not getting anywhere near that. Um, Dr. Melzer talked about it, we also did a podcast the other day talking about sleep with, um, an expert in here, cause he's here in the room, who happens to be a parent in our district. Talking about the number of teens that are significantly sleep deprived and what that actually means. I myself am a little sleep deprived today, I'm feeling a little tired, and I, I know I can feel that impact. You just don't feel as sharp, you feel, um.
No excuses for your presentation.
We all know what that feels like, when we get out of bed and not sleep, and a lot of our kids are coming to school that way every school day. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark, who's going to talk a little bit about the logistics of start time and what that really means here in our district as we dig deeper into this proposal.
So looking at start time, transportation really drives a lot of it in terms of, you know, what, how much time you need in between tiers. Um, you know, if you look at our district there on the right, we're very long and narrow. And so if you kind of look where high school is, it's in the center, and it takes almost twenty, twenty-five minutes just to drive from the high school up to the northern end and, and rain with throw. And the same thing down, if you go to the southern end of, of Afton, down, down here in East.
Can you, just because I'm getting questions from the community, can you back up even one step further and talk about why we're on a three tier system? Related to the cost and the, because I think people don't understand, why don't we just blow up the three tier system and drag everyone at once?
Well, there's been a lot of questions, why can't we all just start at the same time?
Right.
Why can't we all start at eight, or eight fifteen, pick the time, whatever it is?
Right.
So, first off, we, we're on a three tier system to maximize, maximize our efficiency of buses. And so just to refresh your memory, the three tiers right now, and we'll get to the next slide. So the three tiers, the, the first ones are secondary kids. So it's our high school, it's our middle schools, it's our transition, it's our ALC, all of our secondary students are on the first tier. The second tier is our elementary kids. And then the third tier is our charter and non-public schools, which we transport. We don't transport all of our charter and pub, and non-public schools, but the ones who choose to pay transportation with us. Now, stepping back a little bit, the tiers are spread out this way to try to even, to have an even amount of buses for each of the tiers. So right now, we're at about seventy-nine buses running per tier. If we were to all start picking, we're all start at eight o'clock, we're all start at eight thirty. We would need to take everybody, all those buses, the seventy-nine on tier one, the sixty-eight on tier two, that were, all those, add those up together, and then one of them all at once. A, we're in a driver shortage, so to get all those drivers to run that one tier is gonna be hard to do. B, equipment wise, I'm not sure a contractor could get enough buses just from the equipment, enough buses, the mini buses, the vans, that necessary to do it. And then C, the cost to be able to do that all in one tier, it just isn't possible. So the reason we spread that out is to try to get efficiencies, to make each tier roughly the same amount of buses, because our contract is based on the number of buses we run over a, a given time period. So there's a, there's a kind of a three hour block that we, we run our buses on. So if we add buses to a tier, then we just add transportation cost to that.
Thank you. I just wanted to explain for the community to benefit, why the three tiers exist, cause I think that comes up often right now, so.
So we're really trying to use that same bus as many times as possible, so we're not incurring more costs.
And so, if you have right now, and so if we get to our three tiers, which I just talked about here, and so getting to your efficiency part to kind of get there to a down a little bit more, our first tier, um, is our secondary students. And so what we're trying to do is flip-flop our first tier and second tier. So by changing start times, you're moving our elementary to our first tier, and the middle, and the, the secondary students to this second tier. So this is kind of what it would look like, um, from a school start time if we were to change that. So what we tried to do was keep all of our levels to the same time. So all the elementary kids start at the same time, all the middle school kids start at the same time, all the high school kids start at the same time. And we are able to, it also allows us to keep some of our shuttles between the middle and high school, both for both two and, and before and after school runs. But also after school, we run shuttles from our middle school to high school for students that participate in after school activities, whether that be sports, or clubs, or whatever that looks like. There are shuttles from both, um, middle schools that run to the high school. And really, looking at the research that we talked about with the sleep, the sweet spot is starting secondary after eight thirty. So that was another kind of core thing we tried to work around, is to start that middle school and high school tiers after eight thirty. So, we, Dr. Funk had alluded to in our previous conversation with calendar. We had a conversation last week with our charter schools and non-publics around this, and looking into ways to see, so we don't have those finalized yet, but we're looking around how they fit into here, and this would be a cost neutral solution. And maybe there are some ways to find efficiencies with our, our charters and non-publics to kind of weave a mend of this. So that's, that's, we haven't really finalized that yet, cause we're looking for some of those efficiencies. But at a maximum, this would be a cost neutral, we're not looking to add buses or cost of transportation through this, um, change. And then just for some context here, I'm not gonna go through all of them, obviously, but just some of the metro districts around where they are currently with their elementary school start and times, their middle school and their high school. And you can kind of see where our proposed, that's not where we are today, it's our proposed for next year, where that would align with some of the, the surrounding metro districts.
I, I've really appreciated this chart, and I hope that the community really takes a look at this chart too, because I think it also demonstrates that we're not talking about anything that's wildly different than what other districts are, are currently doing.
We have been hearing from a lot of community members, you've been getting emails, we've also had people filling out our feedback form, um, more than eleven hundred so far to date. And the feedback form is still up, we will be collecting feedback throughout January, so that you ha, and then we will be presenting all this in a, a compiled version for you as you go to make your decision in February related to start times. It's a mixed bag, what we're getting for our feedback, to be quite honest. I mean, there are people who really like the idea of starting our secondary schools later, makes sense with the research, they get that. There's also a lot of concern about the family impact. This is a big change for families. The biggest impact is on just family work schedules, um, the extracurricular activities, childcare, and getting kids to and from school. In our responses so far, fifty perc, fifty-seven percent has been from families, we've been hearing from staff, there were even students who have taken part in the online feedback form, and the majority have been elementary families. So a lot of elementary perspectives in what we're hearing. Some of the key themes are the affordability, or the availability and the cost of childcare. That is a major one. Right now, we have families that can come back, divide care in the morning, the afternoon, they might eat a little bit here, not so much there. But if we make this change, we're really changing the structure of that childcare need. Family logistics, um, getting kids to and from school. We have kids who are currently watching their younger siblings after school, and that won't work anymore. There's concern about little kids being out in the dark waiting for buses, especially in these winter months, you know, December and January can be pretty dark. And so a lot of concern about what that would look like. And then the later release time for high school students impacts work schedules, extracurricular activities. And there are a lot of comments about teens just stay up later. If we give them the opportunity to, to sleep in, they're actually just gonna stay up later, and it's going to kind of negate that. So that's the feedback we're hearing online. I think Sam alluded to this, but we also did a survey at the high school, it was a different survey from the online forum, and it was really specific to what's going on at the high school. We worked with Principal Bach and his staff, and they actually presented students in one of their classes with some research related to start times, asked them to read that, different classes handle it different ways. Dr. Funk said a few of us watched some kids have a discussion about it. There were different things that happened across the school, and then ultimately they were asked to take this survey. So in the survey, key themes are very similar to what we've been hearing from the community feedback. There's the fact that students will just stay up later, and that'll kind of take away that whole extra hour of sleep. A lot of disruption to the current schedule, and just concerns about what that's going to look like. There were some students who thought, yeah, later start time's great, but then can we just dismiss at the same time? Because we don't want to have to be impacted by the other, we just have a shorter school day. Um, so that was a popular thought. And the biggest concern was with the later dismissal times and what that means for activities, after school jobs. Just having less time in the evening for all those social activities and family time, and the things that they want to be doing if they have an hour later that they're at school. And you will see too, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, there were twelve hundred and fifty-eight students who responded to the survey, so a really good response on that. to the survey, so a really good response on that. We did ask kids, one of the questions we asked was just typically, what time do you wake up? We also asked them what time do you go to bed, and some of these different things. And I think why I put this in here is because you'll see most, the vast majority of them do wake up before six in the morning, before 6:30 in the morning, 5:30. And if you go back to that chart we saw earlier, and the circadian rhythm and where they are at that time, the time they're getting up is at the peak of that REM sleep. Dr. Meltzer also talked about REM sleep being that important piece for learning and memories. And so, that's significantly shortchanging their ability to get that sleep that they need. 50% of our students said they find it hard to stay awake during that first hour period. And if you've been at the high school, you maybe have noticed that, and our teachers have certainly noticed that. You'll also see a lot of caffeine sitting on kids' desks, and there's research too that shows the negative impacts of caffeine for our students. So, kids are finding ways to adjust, and our kids are amazingly resilient, and so they're getting by. But 50% of them will admit that, yes, it is difficult to stay awake or be attentive in the first hour. And 3.1 said that they are getting enough sleep that they feel more rested and alert in the morning, but that didn't ask about their caffeine intake, so maybe that was part of why they were feeling like they were alert. So, switching gears a little bit, childcare impact again was another major concern that we've been hearing on all of our feedback, and for good reason. And this is a big change to families' lives and their daily schedules. We do expect significantly less care would be needed before school, and that we've seen an increase in after-school care. This is consistent with what other districts have seen too. Annette has been talking with a lot of other school districts who have made this change, and this is what they saw. We get a lot of questions about our waitlist. We already have a waitlist for childcare. We have 325 students on that waitlist right now. Some of those are partially enrolled, meaning they might have before-school care, but they didn't get the after-school care they needed, or vice versa. But there is still a significant waitlist. We did ask our elementary families, we sent them a specific survey about childcare needs, and this is what they said in the graph here, of what they would need if school hours changed. About 19% said no care would be needed. A small, little red sliver in there said before-school care would be needed. The biggest chunk on there, the 61%, is after-school care would be needed. And then, there was almost 19% who said that they need both before and after-school care.
Did you get a high response rate for those surveys that were sent out?
Yes, I think that was 577 responses. And that says it on this one too. So, the other thing we asked is how many families rely on older children to care for younger siblings, and there is about 24% of our families that currently are relying on siblings, so that's certainly something we've been hearing from families, is this would have an impact on that. So, we've had some conversations initially about how we might come up with some strategies to address these childcare needs, knowing that this is really going to be the biggest impact on a lot of our families. Adventure Club staffing, that's really why we have the waitlist, right? We're having a hard time finding staff. So, we have worked with a vendor just for the last week and a half, I think they've been on the job, to help us do some targeted recruitment. And we've already seen, I don't know, I think we have heard upwards of 10, 12, maybe more. We've seen an improvement in the number of applicants we've already received in the week and a half we've been working with them. Other districts who have used this vendor have reported really, really good rates with this. For example, White Fair Lake had a waitlist of about 300 kids at the start of the year, and they're currently down to 75 kids, because they've been doing some really targeted recruitment to try to get people into those positions. We've also been having conversations about combining positions. Childcare positions are unique in the fact that you work a couple hours in the morning, then you have a big gap during the school day, and then you come back in the afternoon. So, it's very hard to fill those types of positions. It takes a flexible person with a schedule who can make that work. We also don't have very many full-time opportunities with benefits, so if we can try to create positions that are more attractive, we're hoping to bring more people in. We're also talking about student workers. If we had some sort of work release as part of our Pathways program, might there be kids at the high school who are interested in working in childcare, maybe getting some high school credit, making a little extra money? So, those are things we're exploring as well. We've had conversations about what we might be able to do after-school if we had this schedule change, where we could do some youth enrichment programs through community ed, or maybe some sort of targeted services programming to help our kids who just need that little extra academic boost at the end of the day. And there are opportunities for us to talk to our community. A lot of other districts who have done things like this have worked with community partners. This is really a community issue, not just a school issue, childcare in general, and keeping our kids engaged and active, so we could look at other opportunities for community groups to come alongside us and provide after-school sorts of opportunities for kids.
Chris, I'll just one thing on here, because I loved the, you had me at kind of targeted services, and I was asking Dr. Funk about this, because as we start talking about catching kids up academically, the, you know, the need to try to improve academic outcomes, I don't know to what extent that could be done, but that is a real huge benefit for me.
So, targeted services has kind of gone away since COVID. People fatigue, staff fatigue, kids fatigue. And, you know, it's successful if you're doing it two or three days a week, after-school program, so it would be great for kids. But it's not, it's not a full week, so I think that's important for folks to know. But I've also, I've seen targeted services. We've seen organizations work with local, like, we don't know YMCA, but YMCA, or other clubs, you know, robotics club, Lego club. So, different programming for kids after-school, it takes some coordination, but there's some opportunities there, I think.
We had some questions about adventure club rates, so just for those who aren't aware, here's some context of what we currently charge for adventure club. There are some limited financial opportunities through Washington County for families who qualify, but that just gives you a little idea of what the current rates are for adventure club. We've had some conversation about middle school. There are some families who have just raised concern about, you know, this is my middle school kid that I'm leaving in the morning to try to get on the bus on their own, and some of them maybe aren't quite responsible at that point to get there, with parents being concerned about that. So, there are opportunities maybe to have some sort of breakfast study club, where a parent could drop their kid off a little bit early, and they'd have a supervised place they can go prior to the start of the school day. Definitely something we need to dig deeper into, but might be an opportunity if we needed that. Bus routes. We currently have kids in our secondary level that are getting picked up as early as 6:20, so there have been people saying, if you flip times, all of a sudden, my elementary school's going to have to be out there at 6:20. But as we've started running the routes, it's really about 7:00 AM would be the time most of our earliest buses would be picking up kids. The elementary school routes are tighter. It's a smaller area, the Fertenance Groundery, so they're not as long routes, so that is nice. That said, December and January are the darkest months of the year, so there are about 35 school days, as we look at this, where it would be dark at pickup time. There's a time of civil twilight, like 20 to 30 minutes before sunrise, where it's light. There's sunlight coming out, but in December and January, there's some dark mornings. As always, we encourage families to accompany younger students to bus stops. That's just a safety piece that we would encourage families any time of the morning to be out there, but especially if it were dark outside. Most of our secondary routes would begin at 7:50 under this proposal. They're currently, as I mentioned, starting as early as 6:20, so that's a big difference for our secondary kids on their pickup times. Extracurricular activities from the high school and middle school perspective too are a major concern. So, we would propose that clubs and sports would continue to meet after-school. There might be some student athletes who need to be released early. That already happens in some cases for some of our sports, if there's longer traveling distances. The good news is, most of the schools in our conference have already switched to a later start time. I'm hearing that there's already some times where our kids have to go to a school and wait for the other kids, because they're on a different time. So, varsity contests really wouldn't be affected by this. Lower levels might start at four, and again, there might be a little bit of traveling there, so there may occasionally be times that they'd be released. And then, talking with Dr. Funk, I think the idea behind this is to give kids sleep, so we would be encouraging, or we would just be telling schools that there would be no after, or there'd be no activities before the school day, really holding that time before school sacred, so that kids can get that extra hour or so of sleep.
Music is my only thing, because there's so many athletes that also do...
We're going to have a different calendar schedule.
So, this chart is something that Dr. Meltzer shared, and I just put it up there because, again, there are the concerns about after-school activities and employment. So, she had mentioned that there is some, what of a dip that has happened in some schools with the activities, and that largely happens because kids have to choose, in some cases, between a club sport and a school sport. So, it's not that they're having to give up a sport, it's that they might just not be able to do both, perhaps. So, that's where that dip is coming from in the activities area. But what's interesting is the employment piece. So, she showed that there was typically the first year, a little bit of dip in the number of kids who were employed, but then it actually increased to above the current levels. And some of that might be as your community adjusts to this, employers become more flexible, they're working with students to make it work too. And we are certainly in an environment right now where I think employers are taking kids whenever they're willing to work and able to work, so they can be more flexible than maybe they've been in the past. Another thing with this is that we are engaging local businesses in this conversation too, and letting them know that these are the things we're talking about, and how would that impact them, and we'll continue to have those conversations as well. Professional organizations, there's many that have endorsed this healthy school start times, are referring to it. There's a lot of research on both the health benefits and, as we mentioned, some of those other benefits as far as academics and social, emotional well-being. So, next up, looks very similar to the calendar piece. We're going to have community conversations on January 4th and 11th and gather all that feedback. We'll be providing more information to you at the end of those, wrapping up the online survey and pulling all that information together for you, and ultimately asking you in February to make a decision related to school start times. Any questions?
I'm sure there are a few. I'll open the floor for anyone that has questions on this.
It seems like the biggest concern that I have heard is around the whole childcare piece for elementary school students. And yet, you know, you shared that chart about how so many of the districts around us already have the later start time for their secondary students. So, I'm just wondering if we've done any research, or if we know what has happened in those other districts with their, because I'm assuming, I guess, that the elementary school students would start earlier. So, what's happening in those other districts? What can we learn? We're not reinventing the wheel here. What can we learn from other districts?
Chris, go ahead.
I think what we've been hearing from other districts is that families adapt, they adjust. It's not easy, but they adjust and adapt. So, I think that's the biggest thing. Every district that we've talked to has been working to try to provide more accessibility to childcare. So, as we were talking, White Fair Lake's been using the same method that we're using. Other districts have been trying to work with the community groups, as you mentioned, YMCA groups and some things like that. Churches sometimes come up with after-school programming, or we already have kind of a model with family means at our Simron Center, where they've been able to provide things. So, maybe working with other parts of our community to come up with things like that as well.
So, Mark, you brought this up. Mark's been in the district for a while. And you talked about how we used to start at eight o'clock in the elementaries. Share with the board what that conversation and how that impacted families.
We used to have a staggered service element, where someone started at eight, somebody at 15, eight-thirty, whatever. I happen to be, at the time, I was at Anderson, we were at eight o'clock starting. And so, when we went from eight o'clock to 8:45, the Anderson families at that time were upset, because now they have to get childcare twice. Where in the morning, they can just get their kids on the bus, then go to work, and then worry about the afternoon. Now, from shifting to an eight o'clock to an 8:45, now they have to do it in the morning and in the afternoon, because they have to be gone for work or whatever. So, we went through this 10 years ago, I don't remember how long it was, when we went 8:45 without elementary, but at that time, there was a lot of pushback from elementary families about having to go to that later start of 8:45.
So, based upon the survey results and based upon talking to other districts and Mark's experience, we anticipate the morning need for childcare to reduce significantly, which then shifts it to the afternoon, but when you're looking at it from a staffing angle, we're not going to have to be hiring people who are split shifts. And if we do have other educational needs for our employees, paraprofessionals, et cetera, we would have the opportunity to align people who maybe work at six hours in one role, and move them to eight hours if they were able to help with the childcare. So, I think this shift provides better recruiting opportunities for us as a district.
Yes, Director.
And I'm along those lines too with childcare. It definitely is a big concern of a lot of families. And as I'm hearing the feedback and kind of processing all this, the issue with childcare has been around for years before we even had this conversation. And the more we talk about it, and the more that we actually got information tonight, it seems like this is really elevating the conversation to an immediate need by looking at these start times. And I'm hoping, and it looks like there's a lot in progress, to really address the need that has been there for a long time, and restructure, and make it more intentional and potentially more valuable for families as well. So, I really appreciate all of the efforts going into childcare. In looking at these, especially compared to what we just saw with the calendar, to me, this seems like this is a lot of work that's happening that needs to happen within our district. This is systemic change in our childcare system. And yet, we're looking at potentially implementing this next year already. So, has there been any discussion about pushing this out another year and looking at really doing this childcare piece and restructuring piece very well and intentionally, so it is successful? And just having both changes in a two-year span, or in one year, but two years from now?
I've been having some conversations with Annette, and she seems to be so open to it, we can call her up. But what she had talked about is, a lot of these changes have already been in place, because we've had a really hard time recruiting people to begin with. So, some of those opportunities to try to combine positions, we've been talking about for the better part of the year, I would say. The Radar Talent is the company that we're working with. They've been in place. We knew that we needed that even before we started talking about start times. We just need them to try to narrow our waitlist that we currently have. So, a lot of those things are already in place and would have happened regardless of this conversation. I think the childcare issue, like you said, is one that's always been there, or has been there for a number of years. It's not going to get better. I mean, it's not going to get better, probably, so we can start to make some improvements along the way, but whether we do it this year or next year, it's still going to be a struggle to find people to fill those positions. It's a challenging position to fill, whether you're a school district or just childcare in general. I think families will tell you even privately, it's very hard to find childcare. So, will it be better over the later year? I don't know that we can say it will be.
Okay. Dr. Funk?
Thank you. Actually, you know, the childcare thing, so it's been a problem, right? And the complexities of that can be also very tasking, not just for the parents, but for staff. Something that always comes to mind when my kids were much younger is, because the adventure club can't take all the kids, you know, staffing problems and the space as well. Have we thought of using community education, like some community programs? It could be art, it could be storytelling, it could, whatever, nothing's, nothing heavy. So, immediately after school, parents would actually pay to have their kids attend those programs. So, it gives them those opportunities. Kids are there, maybe storytelling some folktales or some artwork, and they spend the time interacting with other kids, maybe for an hour or two, depending on when, if families are able to come pick up those kids. That could also be an alternative. So, the kid is not only, parents are not only benefiting, but the kid is building relationships. They also learn something different.
Exactly. So, that's what we talked about with the youth enrichment. That was the idea with community ed. They're already doing that. There's some classes that they offer in schools already. And so, the thought would be, could we continue to do that? Could we even expand some of those opportunities?
Expansion is probably what I'm thinking. So, more parents who get involved, and it would ease a lot of the, and I think these things are not expensive, so it could ease a lot of the burden on the parents.
And that's to, I think Dr. Funk was alluding to this earlier, that's not an everyday kind of opportunity for families. You don't sign them up at every single day that they're going to have an opportunity. But for those parents, it means some kind of, like, I can find someone two days a week or three days a week, but just occasionally, I'm going to need something where I just can't fill it, and that would help fill that gap.
Yes.
Along the lines of what Director Hockert was talking about, the problem maybe doesn't go away after a year, but not unlike the calendar, is it maybe good to give them a chance, give families a chance to find accommodations? You know, to start having those conversations with their employers, so that long-term, they can get to a place where they can say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to shift my own hours to be an hour earlier. I just, you know, I wonder if, you know, and also, is it better to have all the change happen at once, or do you want to have two years of unrest? So, I, I don't know.
I think that one of the things, and again, when I'm asking you to decide, make a decision on this till February, but we have contracted with this agency, and I'm really curious to see what impact this will have. see what, what impact this will have on our immediate needs. You know, we are, we are doing better with our childcare needs since I've been here. I mean, we were, I think our waiting list was closer to five hundred when I first started in the district. And so now we're just over three hundred. So I think we're making progress in the right direction. I still think we have got, we have a ways to go, but I do believe this approach we're taking with this, this agency will help us. But I think if you do decide to start, to switch start times, I think there's going to be some opportunities there to staff it even better because of the fact that it's not a split, split position for most of the positions anymore. The other thing we're looking at, in addition to some of the other enrichment activities we spoke about, is, you know, are there opportunities, economies of scale, if we were to say, okay, within Stillwater, we collapse these three schools into one large adventure club, and we could have staff there at one location. So I mean, we're looking at different strategies on how we could do it. And we would shuttle the kids, you know, at the end of the school to the one location and just tell parents, come pick them up here rather than at Stonebridge. And same thing in the southern part of the district. So we are actively examining strategies to support whatever decision the board makes. And, you know, we will, we will make it happen as best as we can, whenever, whatever you decide to do it.
I think for me too, it's, for me, it's, and Director Lauer, and I think Director Hockert were kind of alluding to this maybe a little bit, is for me, it's like if we're saying that the calendar needs to have people, needs time to get people on board and adjust. To me, the start times for our elementary families, this is a daily change that they're going to have to find, have time to figure out. So I think I'm struggling with doing, I would just think that the calendar would be easier to do next year, this is just me, the calendar would be the easier switch to do next year, and then the start times, to me, it just seems a little bit more involved and educating parent, I mean, we listened to Dr. Meltzer talk about, you know, a lot of the many times with educating elementary parents on how to back up their bedtimes and how to talk to high school kids about really valuing that sleep time and why it's so important. And I think we've already done a lot with that, but there's more work to be done. I am fully behind the idea. I mean, I think that the science is there, the mental health piece, everything is there. I just don't want to make a childcare problem worse because I want to make it better, the same or better. I mean, I don't want to be doing anything that's going to make childcare worse. And then I just had a question on costs, because I just wonder if this is cost neutral? Are we thinking that's going to be a cost, and then obviously our fund balance concerns me.
Minimal cost. The only cost that I'm aware of would be the impact on, okay, if we have to have lunch or breakfast monitors for students, we could drop off at the middle schools early, you know, couple an hour a day, extend somebody, but minimal.
What about if we're hiring people for like longer shifts and putting them on that kind of, community education? And then the only other thing I had was just the equity piece of free and reduced lunch families and as these opportunities, and I believe there's a sliding fee scale already in place with community ed, with some, so just to make sure that the after-school programming we have takes into account that.
One answer I don't have for you, and Annette could do this or Carissa, talk to like White Bear Lake, who just went through this a couple of years ago. You know, we all understand that the morning daycare needs reduce, are reduced significantly. What I think is important for the board to know is, how much are the afternoon going to increase? So how much did White Bear Lake's afternoon childcare go up as a result of the shift?
Yeah, thanks. Very good points, everyone. So thank you. And again, thank you for the opportunity just to look at some different ways that we can try to make a difference based on what the board can do from a governance standpoint. You know, I'll be honest, when I, after, you know, the last meeting with Dr. Meltzer, you know, I came out of it just like, wow, that's just, this is a slam dunk in terms of the benefits and the significant outcomes that can be, that can happen for our students based on the health research around those optimal hours for student learning. And I think it's, and also seeing to the podcast, I mean, again, just kind of reinforces all the science and the independent research, which is significant, that supports that. You know, that being said, you know, my pragmatic side, I still look at, you know, what are some of the operational and logistical concerns and complexities I had after kind of hearing some of those things based on, you know, transportation, childcare, impact extracurriculars? And it seems like, and Dr. Meltzer said, the big impact to teachers was around really elementary school, that they lost some morning prep time. So it seemed like a lot of things have been really well addressed within some of the, you know, some of the solutions that you're trying to find. And so the one other one that I, that I recall that Dr. Meltzer had said is, what is another really important takeaway, is that we have to focus on, you know, doing, you know, educating students and families around the benefits of sleep. And so I guess I'm interested in what type of work is being done to make sure that we can do this, if this is approved, to ensure that we're helping to meet families where they are and some of the realities around that education piece. So I guess that's a question there, but also, you know, as again, we look at some of those logistical and operational complexities, how confident are we to be able to best address that? Or maybe, what's a proper expectation that we can have to say, these are some things that we're going to be able to really address? And maybe what seems, we maybe need to be realistic on, that might take a year or two to really see the benefits?
So there's some things in our control, there's some things out of our control. You know, I mean, I think we've, we can create opportunities internally with high school students, providing them, you know, time and internship or pathways type opportunity to come in and work with kids. Really, at the end of the day, it's just what I just said right before you made your comments, Andrew, and that is, we really got to identify what, what the scope of that afternoon childcare need is going to be. And once we can, okay, get some idea what that looks like, then we can really take a look at, all right, what are the strategies we can put in place to begin to address that? But I'm not going to know that. I mean, we surveyed folks, but I think we need to get that definitive piece. But I think all the other pieces, I mean, yeah, I've been a superintendent who's been in the district that has gone to an eight-thirty start. And it has been, it's community needs and, but as we heard with, when we were, the calendar start times, folks adjust. They figure out a way to do it. And I think if, if we could try and do as many things as we can to support our community, we'll get there. But I can also tell you, and I'll occur with what Carissa said, whether you make the decision to do this for next year or the following year, we're not going to have the hundred percent solution for you either year. But we've got a good team of quality people who will put a plan together to, you know, to address the needs of the community the best way that we can. So there's got, there's a leap of faith that's going to go along with it, whatever you decide.
Appreciate that.
But back to your point on the, yeah, this is daily. The calendar shift is five days. Or, you know, you're starting, not this Monday, you're starting Monday earlier. So this is more of a, okay, daily impact on families.
And one family was here tonight, and was here for start times. Unfortunately, they had their kindergarten left when this came later, but they did say time was, you know, again, they wanted more time. So they could talk to their employers, like Director Lauer said, so they could make arrangements. An objection to the idea itself, it didn't seem that way at least, based on my interaction, it was more of the time to plan and make accommodations to make it work for them. So, which I can appreciate.
I agree with you. I mean, in my experience, we've had employees who have been in similar situations and have had to, you know, request those opportunities so they can have that time to make certain arrangements. So, yeah, I think that's something that we should actually be flexible, where you can give them their support.
And one thing that has stuck with me, and Mark, you had said this, that, and I've talked to some teachers who do confirm this as well, and I think we all see it in our younger kids, they are ready to learn early. And the management in the afternoon of little kids' behaviors is when they're starting to kind of melt down, and you've lost that time to, for that academic instruction. So when people say, well, how is this benefiting elementary kids? Because I'm getting that, like, you're doing this and you're doing it all for secondary. I do see an academic benefit for our younger learners in this, that I think we often aren't talking about that enough, but I definitely see that in my own experience.
Yeah. I guess, you know, and Chair Sherman, you kind of addressed the daily impact, which makes sense once I hear that out loud, because, you know, quite honestly, when looking at, you know, preparing for the presentation and hearing it again today, you know, looking at the responses, was essentially twice as many responses for school start times than the calendar change, where, honestly, the calendar change, I think that's a change in some cultural type stuff of Minnesota values, I guess. But, you know, the school start times, I mean, just again, the overwhelming research is significant. So I guess I'm just maybe anecdotal, just a little bit surprised by that, I guess. I guess, what was you, were you surprised by that?
Well, I'd say they were neck and neck until the decision was made to recommend a delay on the late start, or on the calendar piece. When that happened, then there was really, I've had very little feedback on the calendar since that time. But the start times, we've continued to get a lot of feedback. So just from what I've seen, it was kind of neck and neck, and then all of a sudden, the calendar quieted down.
So the other piece is, you've been looking at start times for what, ten years?
Yes, at least.
At least, yeah.
I think it actually goes back to twenty-eleven, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's.
We know that this is an issue that we have, and it's been an issue for a long time. And I'm trying to, and I'm sure everyone here that's talking to community members, especially those that are younger that are reaching out, you will see the benefit. These younger families, in a blink of an eye, they are middle schoolers, and they are high schoolers that are going to benefit from this decision. If we can support, and you said this, partner with outside resources, nonprofits, private sectors, DACH school pathways program, other areas to support those younger families in this time, but they will think, they will be grateful, just from my own personal experience in having to wake my student up for music practice or school, it's not fun. And it's a very sudden change. And I know you're living through it right now.
Yes, I'm laughing over here because this is our house you're describing right now.
Yeah, like one year they're up and ready to go, and the next year.
Like last, it was last year, and now this year with my eleven-year-olds. So, yep, now it's no longer five AM, it's six-thirty, and you're going to miss the bus.
Yeah.
That's true.
I love the podcast. The intro to the podcast was.
Yes.
It was awesome. That was me in many mornings. So listen to the podcast. Any other comments? Director Lauer, you had?
The only thing I was going to say, it just ran through my head, contradicting my concerns, my pragmatic concerns about starting this too early is that this one year, if we all agree that starting, starting the middle schoolers and the secondary kids later and starting the elementary school kids earlier, that's a year delayed. You know, I mean, you're, yes, we don't want to impact families negatively for their childcare, but you're also saying, we think this is a really good idea, but not a good enough idea that we don't want to do it right away. You know, so it's kind of, there's a balance there, and then, you know, it's kind of, where do you, where do you draw?
I think two important pieces of information are, how was our focus recruiting doing? And then what are we going to anticipate as the afternoon need for childcare? And you'll have that information here, you know, by the time we ask you to make a decision if it works.
Are, besides the, what Superintendent just mentioned, is there any information that you feel like you need outside of that?
And again, we'll have the, the community sessions will have both conversations.
I'm not sure if we'd need this before we made, make a decision, but I just wanted to ask, if this were to get approved for next year or whatever year it does, is there, are there any plans to kind of do follow-up research, like, or data gathering? So, because I guess my concern is, once the change is implemented, things are going to get real, and people are going to have a lot of problems very quickly. And there's going to be immediate pushback, and I know that we're going to get that feedback and pressure to pull back, just because change is hard. So I'm just curious if there's any discussions happening about our, how do we kind of pull back and pay attention to the big picture here and how things are hopefully getting better for everyone?
So, no formal plans in place for that at this point, but I would also suggest for both calendar and for both start times, if you do it, do it for two years at a minimum. Okay? Let things settle and let the community, okay, adjust to it. If you're just going to say, okay, we're just going to do this for a year and try it, most of this feedback, I would not recommend doing that. Because then what's going to happen is you're going to hear from some folks, and then, oh, maybe we need to go back, and then you're going to hear from some other folks. So you got to get, whatever you decide structurally, you got to give it some time to be successful.
And just to add, one of the things that we're talking about as a system is how we evaluate programs better. So I think that's one of the things that we want to be intentional about, is making sure that we do have some metrics and that we will be measuring those on an ongoing basis. When we did the student survey, Principal Bach and I talked about how can we use this in a way that we can follow up? So we can use that same survey and ask some intentional questions that we can follow up and see how that has changed over time. And so I think those are some of the things we're starting to be more cognizant of as we implement things like this, is let's make sure that we have those metrics so we can really determine if this is going to be successful in the long term.
And I know the board appreciates that, because that is something that I think we've been lacking, just in terms of that backend measurement, and I think the return on investment when there's, you know, costs, but this is also going to be a significant amount of staff time to make initiatives like this work. So measuring the value in that is going to be important for the community and for the board's future decision-making. I would say for me, two other things I might need would just be more information on any kind of costs, because for me, the fund balances just keeps me up at night. And then also just the, keeping in mind the equity piece for our families who, you do have siblings that for financial reasons come and watch their students, and just to have that kind of feedback.
No, I would echo that. I think, you know, looking at, it seems like school start times tend to impact maybe the traditionally disadvantaged students and their families, so I think it'd be great to get some insight around that. And I think you made a good point, Dr. Funk, in terms of whatever's decided to sticking with it, and Dr. Meltzer, whoever hasn't listened to that, she really did a great job of kind of saying, if you commit to it, you got to stick with it, because otherwise, what's the point? And again, thank you for asking, what else we may need. I guess for me as well, it's just, and one of the main takeaways I, you know, took from Dr. Meltzer's presentation is just, again, that educational piece. So better understanding what is being done to educate families and students around better sleep practices and making sure that they can take advantage of a change in school start hours if that is ultimately what's voted upon.
I can touch on that briefly. Dr. Meltzer did say that she has some of those resources that she's willing to share, so I can reach out to her and get some of that. They've done some trainings with families and things, you know, just putting little tidbits and newsletters or actually having people come in and speak on it. And again, I'm looking to my new friend out here, Dr. Ambor, who has also offered some of those resources to help educate families.
Good. There you go.
Good discussions. And I think that was it since we switched to the.
Okay.
We're adjourned.
Nice.
Yeah, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You lost your drink?